Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to our regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council, December 6th, 2016. It actually seems like a very special meeting. We have a full house here tonight and I feel very safe with our police department here in force. We're going to start with, I'd like to invite you to join us while we stand for an invocation is Pastor Matt Waite here. Pastor Waite from the First Reformed Church of Oak Harbor and I will follow that with a pledge of allegiance. Pastor Waite?
Let us pray. Dear God in heaven, we want to say thank you. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you and for loving us even when we struggle with that embrace. I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking you that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Oak Harbor. It is in your blessed name that I pray.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Waite. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Looks like we have a full council tonight. And I'm off now to item number one, approval of the agenda. Counselor Servadius?
Thank you. I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We got a motion by Councilman Servadius and a second by Councilman Campbell to accept the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're off onto item number two, presentations. We have several presentations tonight. I think our first three, it looks like three or four are going to be, it looks like perhaps our first five are going to be connected to our police department. And I see we have Chief Dresker here with us, so I'm going to hand it over to you, Chief.
Okay, thank you Mayor and council members. So I'm going to go off script just a little bit because of your comment. And you should feel safe, we have some outstanding quality officers here tonight. And while they're not necessarily here for that, that's part of their job and that's what we're all about. Also, I'm very honored to be here tonight to present awards, the first one since I've taken this position. I had the honor of attending graduation for two of our newer officers not too long ago and this will be the first set of awards and I'm sure there'll be other ones coming on. And I'm proud to be able to make this recognition. Police work is a dangerous profession. It's a noble one and you'll see mourning bands on a lot of their officers badges, unfortunately mine's on my other badge I was wearing today. And that's of course for the officer and the funeral service that we'll actually have a couple of members going to this Friday. But tonight we're here to recognize some outstanding accomplishments by some of our officers, so I'll kick that right off. So if I could ask Officer Clements and Officer Schrieker to come forward. Stand over there, please. I was told I have to stay by a mic because last time I was here it didn't project, so... So I'm going to read, we have two awards here. I'm going to read one narrative to describe what occurred. And something that, as I was writing these awards up or finalizing them, first of all I want to make sure I commend the supervisors for the officers who recognize the officers and other officers who present things for us to look at, especially with this particular incident because I was not yet working here when these particular incidents occurred. And as I was doing the awards, I noted that they both occurred on the same day, the actions performed by these officers and by our next recipient. So, this is the lifesaving award for Officer Michael Clements and and a certificate of commendation for Officer Claire Schrieker. So I'll just read one of these to shorten it up a little bit. "In recognition for your actions while performing your duties on September 24th, 2016, which assisted and directly led to the saving of a life. Officer Clements responded to a welfare check at Oak Harbor Jack-in-the-Box, one of many routine calls which police officers respond to every day. When Officer Clements arrived, he found a male in a vehicle who was not breathing and did not have a pulse. Officer Clements reacted quickly and pulled the male out of the vehicle and placed him onto the ground. Officer Clements immediately began CPR as the subject's wife stood nearby, adding to the already critical nature of the incident. Officer Schrieker arrived on scene and took an AED, an Automatic External Defibrillator, device to Officer Clements' location and began preparing the AED for use. She handed the AED to Officer Clements who placed the pads on the male. Oak Harbor Fire Department personnel arrived on scene and another round of CPR was performed. The AED makes an indication and indicated that an electrical shock was called for, so Officer Clements pushed a button on the AED to deliver the shock. A pulse was then detected on the male and Oak Harbor Fire Department personnel took over lifesaving efforts and then transported the subject to the hospital. Thanks to the actions taken by Officer Clements and other emergency service personnel along with Officer Schrieker, on this day, this subject was revived and admitted to the hospital. The actions taken by Officer Clements and Officer Schrieker were selfless acts performed as part of their dedication to duty and to the community. Officer Clements' actions this day during this incident bring great credit to him, the city of Oak Harbor, the Oak Harbor Police Department, and the law enforcement professionals who are called upon to make critical decisions at any moment of any day. And Officer Schrieker's actions, likewise, I have the same description there under her certificate. The actions by both of these officers with the assistance of other emergency personnel directly led to the saving of the life of the male experiencing this medical emergency. Officer Clements is hereby awarded the Oak Harbor Police Department's lifesaving award and Officer Schrieker is awarded the Oak Harbor Police Department Certificate of Commendation." And we'll hand the plaques, but get around the plaques. I'll have it stepping in front of the podium one by one. And this is a plaque for Officer Clements and I'll hand that to him and thank you for your work. And he also, with his particular award, gets a medal and a ribbon, is what we call it, that would go on above his shirt and if he chose to wear it. Usually doesn't go with the coveralls, but it does on the other. So, thank you very much. Okay, Officer Schrieker? Officer Schrieker, thank you for your work. Appreciate it. Sorry about that. Little side like that story, it's kind of hard sometimes to figure out outcomes, results passed or further on because of some HIPAA laws and things like that, but coincidentally, and I don't know if they're here tonight, the two, the male and female that were involved? Okay. So last week was the first time our officers ran into them and he's doing fine, he's got medical upkeep, but he's still out and about, so that's great. Okay, Officer Brown, front and center. I told them to stand at attention, but none of them are doing it, so I guess. So again, on the same date, on September 24th of 2016 is an incident that we all know about. Again, I wasn't here at this time, but I of course heard about it. So I'll go ahead and read from the certificate regarding Officer Michael Brown. "In recognition of your actions while performing your duties on September 24th, 2016, which led to the arrest of the suspect involved in a tragic shooting at the Cascade Mall in Burlington, Washington just hours prior. Officer Brown started to shift early that night and headed towards the suspect's possible residence. While en route, Officer Brown made phone contact with Skagit County detective involved in the search. As Officer Brown was driving northwest on Northwest Crosby, he observed a blue Chevrolet Cavalier traveling eastbound towards him. Officer Brown was able to read a portion of the license plate which matched the information that he had obtained as a possible suspect vehicle. He turned his patrol vehicle around to follow the vehicle and attempt to verify the license plate. The suspect vehicle turned onto North Oak Harbor Street. Officer Brown was able to get close enough to the vehicle to confirm the license plate did not belong and the vehicle had also immediately pulled over." I'm sorry, that's later on. "Was able to get close enough to the vehicle to confirm the license plate did belong to the vehicle associated with the suspect. He immediately requested additional law enforcement support. The suspect vehicle turned onto Northwest Columbia Drive. Officer Brown followed the vehicle and soon realized that after making the turn, the driver had almost immediately pulled over. This placed Officer Brown, who was coming on the vehicle quickly in serious jeopardy, and he was adjacent to the suspect as he observed the suspect messing around with something on the seat. Recognizing the danger, Officer Brown quickly pulled forward and made a U-turn to give himself a tactical advantage. He obtained his patrol rifle and exited his vehicle and began to address the vehicle and start to deal with that. Other officers, deputies, were en route to assist and as he was, made his U-turn and was getting out of his vehicle, he heard over his radio that two Island County deputies confronted a suspect, I think a block away or approximately a block away, leaving the scene of where he was at. They went right into where the deputies were at, who were able to take him into custody without further incident. Officer Brown's actions, which led to locating the suspect in the shooting and coordinating law enforcement's response resulted in a quick apprehension of the suspect. This in turn assisted those investigating this incident and brought a small amount of relief to the families of the victims and the community of Burlington and possibly prevented additional loss of life. Officer Brown displayed outstanding service and a high degree of initiative and his actions bring credit to him, the city of Oak Harbor, the Oak Harbor Police Department, and the law enforcement profession. He performed in an exemplary manner during this incident and is hereby awarded the distinguished service award." So I have one more presentation, if you bear with me. I know it's hot in here, we got lots to do tonight. I think I have something right after this, too. I went to a recognition that Burlington had, I think it was, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, but they held an open house to recognize public servants, fire, aid, law enforcement, who took part in that tragic incident. And it was a very nice event in the mall there at the children's museum. And they had one of these keychains for all the first responders to grab. It says "Thank you," a little keychain that kind of spins. So I grabbed one for a lot of our officers and the ones who are mentioned in this next presentation. So this is a letter of commendation to the Oak Harbor Police Department team. So basically the department as a whole, but there's some specific people who had some specific actions. And some of this is going to be a little bit of a repeat with some information, but bear with me, please. "On September 24th, 2016, a suspect entered a Macy's store in Burlington, Washington, killing five people and forever altering the lives of families in the community. Police officers in Burlington and surrounding community responded and pooled resources to deal with this incident. It was learned that the suspect's last known address was in Oak Harbor and contact was made with the Oak Harbor Police Department to request assistance. Those who enter the law enforcement profession generally do so out of a true passion and desire to help people in the communities we live in. When tragedies such as this occur, those officers and staff who work for police agencies are eager to help in any way possible and those working for the Oak Harbor Police Department excelled in providing that assistance during this tragedy. The shift on duty when the suspect's identity was discovered included Sergeant Wilkie and Officers Clements, Sloick, and Schrieker. They immediately offered assistance and Sergeant Wilkie talked with Officer Brown, who was coming on for the next shift, and Officer Brown started his work early to assist and was able to locate the suspect driving his vehicle. The other officers coming on for graveyard shift included Officers Esparza, Krasinski, and they, along with the day shift officers, all responded towards Officer Brown's location. The suspect exited his vehicle and fled, but ran into two Island County deputies who were responding, was taken into custody without incident. Arrests such as this do not end the work to be done, but are instead usually the catalyst for additional work, which was the case this night. All of the mentioned officers pitched in on various tasks, including securing and transporting the suspect vehicle to the police department pending a search warrant process, transporting the suspect to the police department and maintaining custody of him until detectives handling the incident could respond, watching the suspect's residence until detectives could obtain a search warrant, and this was for quite a period of time, which they obtained it on the 25th. Officers working day shift on the 25th included Sergeant Syme, Officers Krechman, and Loma, along with Detective Hoagland. And they all assisted with assorted tasks when they came on duty, including assisting in setting up for interview with the suspect, talking with neighbors around the suspect's residence, protecting and processing evidence and providing other needed support for the investigating agencies. Other support by jail and records personnel occurred as reports and other paperwork were completed and forwarded to appropriate locations. As evidenced by this incident, providing law enforcement services to our community truly takes a team operating with dedication and professionalism. I say without hesitation that the Oak Harbor Police Department team feels fortunate to have been able to assist their neighboring communities and law enforcement agencies as they dealt with this tragic incident. The citizens of Oak Harbor should take pride in the work their department did during this incident and the officers and staff that were involved are to be commended for their dedication and hard work. They reacted in a fine tradition of law enforcement and as members of an extended community and provided needed support to the families of the victims and the communities involved." And this is signed by me and I wasn't here during the incident, it's also signed by the mayor. And so a copy, or this plaque here will actually hang up in the police department and then individual certificates of those officers that were specifically named on here. And you know, you always miss people and like I said, there's back behind the scenes people working on everything like records and all that stuff. So anyways, I very much appreciate being a part of the department and the way they handled this. So, that's it.
Thank you Chief. I think we should take about two minutes and go down and shake their hands and then we'll reconvene in the meeting. Okay, after a short break, we'll reconvene here and I think we're on to community presentations. 2016 Annual Police Community Advisory Board Presentation. We have Chief Kevin Dresker back at the microphone. Take it away Chief.
Well, thank you. So I'm here today, I think every year that the departments give a presentation on a community advisory board, which consists of volunteers that assist us greatly and assist the community by their actions. And I guess I'll follow along on this. So we, Meg and some others put together a PowerPoint along with Marty. I'll go through this. These are our current CAB members and some of them are here. Would you guys stand up, the ones that are currently here? I'm going to read off the names and if you'd just kind of hold up your hand to let them know who you are as I do that. So our chair this year is Marty Malloy. I'm going to say names wrong, too, I know it. Gene Barnier, Jeff Campbell, Nora, I know she's here, Nora Daniel, Susan Gerard, Sarah Hackley, is that right? Cheryl Lawler, Bob Olson, Austin McBride, and Jackson Wesman? Did I say it right? Weisman, alright, I knew I'd get one wrong. Thank you. Round of applause while they're standing up, please. (applause) And I won't make you guys stand through my presentation here. So I think we have around six or seven slides. "The members of the CAB provide a valuable service by providing information and understanding for both the police department and the community. They provide insight as the department consistently works to strengthen community ties and participation to work together on activities which affect the quality of life in Oak Harbor. The CAB was established by an ordinance in Oak Harbor, Ordinance 897, on September 17th, 1991. Some of its goals are, the purpose, enhance police-community relations, apprise the mayor, city council, and chief of police of community needs for police services, hold public meetings to solicit public input, and then they have no authority over personnel or police-related incidents." And these are some photographs, this is from National Night Out on August 2nd and that's a big event for the city and for the CAB and their involvement. And we have some employees in there, too, I know Lisa in there. So the CAB has worked with the department this past years, informing us on issues such as graffiti, panhandlers, transit problems in camps, trash in parks, speeding in neighborhoods, drug problems, skateboarding on Pioneer Way, and assorted other items of interest to the community and the police department. The CAB also assists with several community events that can be found at parades, National Night Out. They are there to help us and to interact with the community and provide valuable feedback to the department. And then these are Oak Harbor Police Department values, to involve the community in all policing activities which directly affect the quality of life. The CAB epitomizes the values for the Oak Harbor Police Department. We can't do this job without the community and the community should be involved because we work for the citizens of Oak Harbor. And CAB meets the second Tuesday of every month at 4:15 PM in the Oak Harbor Police Department in the training room. And I very much appreciate their service, just like with the volunteers that work at the police department with us, too. We have a couple of volunteers that work in there and it takes, you know, it takes their time and effort to be able to do that and it's all for the community, so we very much appreciate their work. And I think that's, yeah, that's not mine. Oops, I'll leave that up there. So thank you guys, one more time and applause.
So Chief, before you're done and out of here, I want you to know that I really enjoy my giving, my opportunities to go around the community and give our state of the city program. And one of the highlights is the safety that we have in the city of Oak Harbor. Our numbers show that we are one of the safest communities in the state of Washington and I attribute that to your department and you and the CAB board and all of the hard work that you do and we want you to know that we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Your Honor.
Councilman Campbell?
For the members of the CAB, I noticed that the chief mentioned Cheryl Lawler. She had surgery in Seattle today on her foot, not her feet. Everything went well, she's in recovery, so that's the reason she's not here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Okay, thanks again Chief. Okay, now we are on to item number two, C2. Our annual holiday wreath presented to the city of Oak Harbor by Boy Scout Troop Number 4059. And I see we have Brian Jones at the microphone. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, on behalf, I just wanted to introduce the scouts of Troop 4059 led by our scoutmaster, Dan Hague. Come on in, guys. Dan Hague and attended by assistant scoutmasters Miles Gallagher, Matthew Erickson, and Justin Stevens, I believe are the three that showed up today. And it's my pleasure to introduce our senior patrol leader, Matthew Blanchard, for the presentation.
Like you said, my name is Matthew Blanchard and on behalf of the families of Troop 4059, I'd like to present this holiday wreath to the city in appreciation to all the support you've given scouting in our community. I want to say thank you and I'm here to answer any questions you have about scouts or wreath sales.
So, anybody questions? Anybody? Yes, Councilor Heisen?
Mr. Blanchard, could you tell us about wreath sales? Where would we go to get one? How much are they, etc.?
So, every year we do wreath sales about this time.
We're sold out.
Yeah, we're sold out this year.
No, no.
You can come to our scout hall, which is by, it's down by, Sinex or the Country Store, it's down that road. There are $25 for the regular, traditional, natural, or silver, or gold. The cedars painted different colors. Or $30 for the deluxe and it's the same thing, only it has glass balls on it that are different colors.
Okay.
To get mine early next year.
Anyone else? Well, I want you to know that we feel especially fortunate this year to get a wreath especially that size because I'm guessing that would have made about five smaller ones to sell. So we thank you very much and hopefully we can take just a moment and come around and get a picture taken with you. So, thanks again.
So Troop 59 have been serving the Oak Harbor community for more than 80 years. Guys, you can go. Oh, have been serving the Leave the wreath. Yep. They are the, this is the longest tenured Boy Scout troop on Whidby Island, more than 80 years that they've served the Oak Harbor community. And it's our pleasure for the past 30 years or so to present the holiday wreath to the city of Oak Harbor. So thank you for all that you do. God bless.
And thank you for all that you do. Thank you. Okay, we're, I think, on to item number three, citizen comment period. Citizens may comment on subjects of interest not listed on the agenda or items listed on the consent agenda. To ensure comments are recorded properly, please state your name clearly into the microphone. Please limit your comments to three minutes to ensure all Please limit your comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time to speak. So, citizen comment period. Do we have any going once? Okay.
Good evening, Councilman, and Mayor. Matt Plush, Whidby Island Bicycle Club, just stopped by to say thanks again for supporting the Whidby Island Bicycle Club in the Thanksgiving or cyclocross race coming up this weekend. Yeah, all the permits are in. The weather doesn't look too great, but we kinda like the mud and the snow and all the good weather we're gonna have, so. Been talking to Brad Nelson, who's kinda heading it up, and he has confirmed that we have riders coming from Montana, Idaho, Vancouver, Victoria, Portland, Oregon, so be a lot of people on the island this weekend for the race. So, we have no real idea for numbers. Lot of the races this year have had like fifteen hundred people show up, so it could be two hundred, we could be fifteen hundred, so we'll go with it when it happens. I Facebooked several people with the link to the video we did to promote it, and I will resend that out, so if you're a friend of mine on Facebook or the Whidby Island Bicycle Club on Facebook, you can look at the commercial that we did with, we built some of the course while we were doing a work party the other day. It's really interesting, has shots from past years, so. And everybody's welcome, kids are welcome to come ride. There's a, around the eleven o'clock hour, there's a fun little ride that we just do around the playground area for the little tiny kids and training wheels and stuff, and that's kinda the highlight of the ride of the weekend, so. And then there's several categories, so you can be a professional rider, or you can be a novice that just shows up and wants to ride for an hour on your bike in the grass in the mud. Have any questions?
Any questions? Yes, Councilor Ombur?
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Matt, in your applications, people come in, do you have an opportunity to record where they stay, what impact they're having when they come into the community? It would be helpful, I'm sure, in the LTAC surveys if you had that information.
Yeah, so what we do is we send out, we get everybody's email addresses, and we'll send them an email out and find out where they stayed. So, I know last year we had, I think, eighteen rooms at either the Candlewood or Best Western that were taken up by people, and then several people stayed in VRBOs and some, some other stay houses. So, we try to figure out who's there, and so, yeah, we'll keep those numbers and get them back to you in January.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Matt, and good luck on the weather.
Alrighty. Thanks, guys.
Anyone else? Citizen comment period? Okay. Thank you. We're on to item number four, consent agenda. Anybody like to remove that? And if not, we're gonna accept it as is presented. Any questions, changes? Okay. Item number five, mayor's comments. I do have a couple of comments regarding flag lowering. We're actually gonna have our flags lowered tomorrow, which is for National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. The national day, this was created by Congress in nineteen ninety-four in honor of those Americans killed or injured as a result of the attack on Pearl Harbor on December seventh nineteen forty-one. This year is the seventy-fifth anniversary. Flags will remain at half-staff until close of business or sunset on Wednesday, December seventh. There will be also a flag lowering. Our chief spoke briefly about that we've been deeply saddened by the death of Tacoma Police Officer Reginald Jake Gutierrez. So, our flags will be lowered on Friday, twelve nine. Officer Gutierrez was killed in the line of duty on Wednesday, November thirty, and again, they'll remain at half-staff until close of business or sunset on December ninth. There will be a memorial service held on Friday at the Tacoma Dome in Tacoma, open to the public. Time has yet to be announced. Also, announcement that December is impaired driving prevention month. We will have a presentation at our December twenty council meeting, and then I'd also like to have a brief conversation, at least with council, about our attendance at the NLC conference in Washington DC, which is scheduled for March eleventh through the fifteenth of twenty seventeen. What we've done in the past, we've sent the mayor and up to three council members, I think that's what the budget covers. And a couple notes, I'll make that a councilperson. Wessinger has not attended yet. Rick Omburg has attended, but it's been a few years, and Beth Muns is usually a pretty darn key player. In fact, if Beth couldn't go, I think I'd stay home and send her in my place, so. It's recommended to have Beth attend every year. Hopefully, you can again this year. So, looking for other interested, are you interested, Councilperson Wessinger?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And how do, how do the rest of you feel? Oh, okay, Mr. Campbell, no?
I'll defer, I went last year.
Mr. Servadius, no?
I didn't go last year, so I'd like to if there's an open spot.
Okay.
I wanted to attend the conference this year. Hadn't been there for like four years, maybe five years.
Okay. Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll take those notes and pass it along to our city administrator, Dr. Merriman. I think that concludes my comments, so we'll go to council members before I turn it to council or to our city administrator. So, any councilors like to speak? Have anything? Yes, Mayor Protim?
I'd like to request to be excused for a regular meeting on December twenty. I'll be out of town.
Hmm, okay. Okay. Make a note of that, if you will. Dr. Merriman and Councilman Ombur?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make just kind of a public announcement, that we had a midnight visitor at our house picking packages off of the front porch. Fortunately, the security cameras picked him up, picked up on it, and the police department seems to have an idea who it may be. If we get, if you get late deliveries and you don't check it every night before you go to bed, I recommend that you do check it, because the postal service and some of the other delivery people are delivering, this one package came after seven thirty, almost, yeah, about seven thirty, and it was eleven oh nine when the package was picked off, according to the security camera. So, anyway, have you, watch out for your neighbors and just don't leave packages on the, the front doors. It's inviting, inviting trouble. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Yes, Councilor Muns, did you wanna?
Thank you. At your position on the dais, there's an MRSC, which is Municipal Research Service Center. Basically, it's a staff of lawyers and advocates that can research any problem you have. It can be citizen, legislature, or whatever, but they will go through if there's legal ramifications, or what you can do, what steps you can take. It could be homelessness. Right now, they're working on a policy for homelessness for cities and for our legislature, and anyway, it's off the press. I'm on their board of directors now, and how they get their revenue, and what it's from, and what's to use, and they were in about this close from losing all funding from the state, because they share revenues with the county and the city, and then also with the state legislature. So, they, there's some testimonies in here that says what kind of help they can give cities. I know that our own staff, Nikki and Anna, have used them a lot, and I believe our other, our attorney has used them, and so even developers coming from out of state, or attorneys working in the state call them up, and this is where you're going to get the factual information. They will give you down the road, pros and cons, what you can do and what you can't do. So, just take a look, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilor Muns. Councilor Campbell?
Thank you. To add to what Mr. Ombur said, I live just off of Keller, and last night, my neighbor had somebody pick a package up from her house. I know that because at about ten o'clock this morning, one of our finest police officers was sitting in front of her house taking the report, so they are there, and be careful. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Wessinger?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate a local organization, our local Big Brothers and Big Sisters. They had a very record-breaking, successful festival of trees this past Friday night. I'm so fortunate to attend for the second year in a row, and it really was amazing. They did a great job, and it's just such a great event and organization overall for our community, so I wanted to congratulate them.
Very, very well put. I, too, was at that evening, and it was, it was quite a show, really nicely done. So, Councilor Heisen?
Thank you, Mayor. At first, I wanna say thank you. I noticed our vision and mission statement and our goals in chambers, so thank you so much. It's nice to be able to look at that and keep that in mind as we, as we make our decisions and deliberate and prioritize. And I, you know, Rick just gave me the perfect segue into something that I've been wanting for a few years now, but haven't really found a way to make it happen. We have some really amazing people in our community. We live in a great community, and with that comes some more mischievous elements of our community, and frankly, I'm frustrated with the amount of vandalism that's happening downtown, with the assaults that are happening downtown, with things that are really, really easy to prevent and/or solve if we had security cameras. So, I don't know if I need to make a motion or just a request, but I would like staff to bring forward an agenda bill at our next meeting, so that we can discuss the possibility of purchasing and installing security cameras. Do I need to make a motion on that, or?
What do you think?
I would.
Okay, I'm getting some advice from our city attorney here, that maybe this is something, before you make a motion, we can do some policy analysis on that and bring that back to you right away?
Okay.
And get that, and then we can see how we wanna proceed with that request.
Okay. Well, the request was just a discussion, so we could maybe have that discussion at the same time? Because if there's anything policy-related, then I'd wanna be aware of that.
There are potential legal ramifications to that type of decision, and so what we would wanna look at first was, would be putting in place a policy for use of the security cameras?
Gotcha.
And then rolling that out and implementing.
Perfect. Thanks.
Councilor Campbell?
I wonder if Ms. Heisen would, would agree to the suggestion that we do the discussion at the first meeting in January? That way, the entire council will be here at our next meeting. Two of us are missing.
Excellent suggestion.
Can you, will you be able to get it done that quick? By first meeting in January? Okay. Okay. Okay, anyone else? Any that topic or any different? Okay. Okay, we're on to city administrator comments.
I just have a couple of quick things for council tonight. Our next meeting, which will be our last regular council meeting of the year, will be on December twentieth, and we are not having a workshop this month, so you can take that one off your calendars for the month. As the mayor mentioned, we have the NLC conference coming up soon. Actually, registration, I believe, is now open, so those that will be attending, you will be getting a phone call from Ms. Nicole to assist you in setting up reservations, and we'll start working on that process. Also, we will be talking tonight for a few minutes about our legislative priorities, and one of the items I just wanted to add on here is we're working on scheduling a meeting with our legislators and Senator Bailey's office. Right now, you have a lot of busy people trying to get together on one particular day, so we're getting close. But we've been working on this for some time, but we should, either towards the end of the month, or maybe, it might have to be a little bit later this year, maybe first part of January, before we can get everybody here in Oak Harbor at the same time. So, we are working in that process right now. So, really, the last piece that I have here, I'm actually gonna hand off to Brett Arbitson for our clean water facility update.
Good evening. Ready for our normal clean water update. Lately, if you've been around us, we've been going through demolition, which has been quite noisy and pounding. We have a device called TikTok, which I, at lunchtime, I don't realize how loud it is until it's quiet. We also use a lot of other brute force stuff to break this up, so right now, we are doing a lot of, I say neighborhood-intensive activities. Hopefully, it'll be done by Christmas. Now, the interesting thing about this is, as we break these things down, it's, like I say, it is a pretty, I'd say, challenging effort, because we put them up, we have, we just can't take them down. We have to take them down in pieces, and also have to take them down safely, because something could drop on somebody, so it's, it's not only intensive that with machinery, but we have to be very careful about how we work around it. If you notice up in front there, though, one thing was, I found interesting today, if you see in front there, we're generating a lot of rebar off of things. We break the, the concrete into smaller pieces, which you see in the back here, and that results in rebar, so we come back and rebar. So, one of the small line items in our GMPs is, for this concrete, we actually recycle and scrap out the rebar, and it's not a huge amount of money, but I was surprised that we're seeing several thousands of dollars coming in back to us, so all that rebar we're pulling out is being scrapped out, and interesting fact I learned today was, we actually had our price for our scrap metals set about a year and a half ago. Right now, the price of scrap is very high. We couldn't give it away, but we're getting at the, at the set price, so that was an interesting piece of information I got from there. The concrete is actually being recycled to the landfill up at the concrete pit here. We do quite a bit of recycling on site, mostly wood debris, and we have a lot of cardboard, but we're looking into maybe increasing that amount of recycling quite a bit. Anyway, design-wise, not much going on. We did have, at our last meeting, a new contract to start windjammer project tasks, so we're starting to get the background work on that, and we'll start seeing some public involvement activities after the first year. Construction-wise, we're pouring concrete. I think as of last week, we poured about four thousand of five thousand yards on our first GMP, so that's coming along very nicely. Concrete, where it is, does remain ahead of schedule and below our labor estimates. We did conduct a tour with you on the sixteenth. I hope you enjoyed the tour. Everybody was glad to see you there. If anybody else wants to set up a tour with us, we can certainly arrange for that. Like I say, we are bashing away at the, at the site, hoping to be finished with demolition by Christmas, then we're gonna go into, unfortunately, back into stone columns for a while. We did open GM bids last Friday, and we're evaluating those bids right now, and we'll hopefully bring that to you in the future. GMP number nine, which was the big one for mechanical-electrical, that's actually starting to pick up. We're starting to see electricians and the pipe fitters on site quite a bit more, and we're also starting to see a lot of the equipment starting to move in through our submittal process, and a big part of this is, is, you know, pumps and screens and big process equipment coming in, so that stuff will start showing up in this, in the spring and summer. But it's a lot of work to do to get, to get it here. Unfortunately, City Beach was remained closed, but I've been assured that we'll have it by the first part of next week. We have the pipeline in, and right now, we're just kinda waiting for the good day when we have the asphalt batch, batch plant will be back up. Unfortunately, that's been taking a little longer, but we'll be back there. Unfortunately, the street, when we're done, is gonna look like a Frankenstein monster. We are gonna replace it at the end of the project, so right now, we're just patching it up so people can use the street. Funding, we have executed the loan agreement that was approved by council at the last meeting, and we actually are starting to process bills back in through that, so that's good news, and we have submitted an application for two thousand and eighteen. Still be pretty fast and furious. A big milestone to us is December twentieth. We plan on probably coming to council to start the lagoon process, so we can transfer the lagoon back to the Navy. So, that's probably a milestone in all the work, so having our own plan online has become a real, real date to us. And the 20th, we're planning on bringing GMP number 11 back. Pretty much on schedule. Nothing changed there. We're working progressively, trying to pull that to the left if we can. Of course, always, we have public outreach. We have our website, of course, at oakharborcleanwater.org. You can call us at our 914-7000 number or you can call our office numbers. We have quite a bit of traffic on our treatmentplant.okeharbor.org. People are, we have Monday drop-ins, but people are welcome to come by and catch us if they can. Any questions?
Okay, any questions? Comments? Brilliant job, Brett.
Busting concrete.
Okay, we'll move on to item number six, public hearings and meetings. To speak during a scheduled public hearing or meeting, please sign in on the sheet provided or just come up when I call you. To ensure comments are recorded properly, state your name clearly in the microphone and please limit comments to three minutes to ensure all citizens have sufficient time. So, item number 6A is ordinance number 1778, 2017-2018 biennial budget. And it looks like we have our finance department head, Patricia Sewell here.
Thank you. Okay, so tonight, I'm going to have a much shorter presentation. It's just going to cover questions, changes that we may have made, and answer any questions you may still have. So, I just want to go over our current, what we've done so far. Revenue estimates were presented in August. We had a series of department head budgets that were presented at workshops. And then the draft final was presented on November 15th. Tonight is a public hearing for the ordinance 1778, adoption of the final budget. I'm going to give an overview of the final budget, discuss any changes made since the draft budget was presented, and clarify any questions raised during the draft presentation. Overview of the final budget, all budgets are in balance by fund. Budget document was emailed to you and is also printed for your review. Couple of things, titles that might be confusing. The Fund OO3 Current Expense FSA. This is for a cafeteria plan, which is a way for employees, an IRS allowed practice to take money out of your check pre-tax to pay for qualified dependent care or medical expenses. And so we set that up and employees set money aside and then it's drawn out as they use it for qualified expenses. Fund 320, it says construction dock project is actually where the Portland loo's or equivalents for the Flintstone parks will be charged. So, that one is kind of confusing, so I wanted to clarify that. The changes that were made to the final budget, the beginning fund balance. We took a look back in October at all of the beginning fund balances and adjusted them for any things that may have changed. When we look at that, we look at how are they comparing to budget? Are we getting more than what we anticipated? And if so, we made the changes into the budget, the beginning fund balances. The beginning and ending fund balances were added to the budget to balance. So, if you're looking at the totals that were in the draft budget, they went up in every fund to cover the cash that, we call it fund balance, that's in each fund to balance the budgets to zero. So we start with the beginning fund balance and whatever it takes in expenditures to balance it to zero is recorded as an ending fund balance. So, that's why there's a change between the draft and final. We didn't have the fund balances in the draft because we wanted to look at operating expenses versus revenue. The final budget, things that were, changes that were also made were accounts were adjusted to clean up final numbers. Some of the things that we did was we trued up our allocations using the final budget numbers for our 510, our 502, and our 501 funds, our intra-service funds. We removed or added missed revenues or expenses. We moved correct, we corrected by moving revenues or expenses to current, the years that actually match the timing of the projects. Sometimes, we had the expense going out in the year before the project or the year after, so we just made sure all of those were cleaned up. The net change was 243 to 64, increased revenue over the two years. And that was mainly due, the DOT grants for the arterials was not included in the 17 and 18 budgets. So, that revenue wasn't added in. It was in the document, but it didn't carry over to the totals. So, that was what was, that was our biggest change. There were other smaller changes, but that was the majority of the change. General fund, beginning fund balance, cash available at January 1st. It increased about 900,000. And the reason it did that was we looked at sales tax collections versus budgeted. By the end of the year, we'll have 500,000 more collected in sales tax than what we anticipated to collect. And also, the animal shelter, we budgeted a $400,000 project that won't be occurring in 2016. Where did we end up in general fund? So, I just want to go through general fund in a little more detail because that was one that raised a lot of questions, so I just want to make sure I answer them fully. So the step, first step that we used when we were looking at the general fund to figure out, was the deficit recurring or was it other areas? So we started with, number one, determine if recurring expenses will be sustainable. The operating revenues, less the operating expenses, in 17 left us with a surplus of 546, 693. And in 18, it left us with a use of fund balance of 31,000. Step two, we took out the one-time expenses. Expenses that were put in there to accomplish a goal for one time, not a reoccurring that would only happen once. You have those on page 55 of the packet or the email, just so you can review what those are made up of. They were presented at the draft budget also, but. So when you take those out, in 17, we go down to 360 to 15 surplus and an increased use of fund balance in 18 of 66,000. Then when you look at the capital outlays, which then start in your packet on page 56. For general fund, they're also included on that one-time expense sheet, so it's in two places for general fund. We go down to 207, 115 in surplus and we remain the same in 18 because there were no capital projects scheduled for fiscal year 18. And then step four, we look at the inter-fund transfers. Moving sales tax, excess sales tax out of the general fund into the Windjammer Park fund. And that move is 629,000 in 18 and 177,000, or 17, and then 177,000 in 18. That's what brings us to our use of fund balance. So we're using 422, 871 in 17 and 243, 671. But essentially, we're moving funds from one fund balance into another fund balance to do a project. It's a move versus a expenditure inside of the system. And then step five, we take where we ended with the 422 and the 243 and we add in what our beginning fund balance was. So our beginning fund balance went up 900,000 or so, around that, to 2,392. After we take out the fund balance that we're using, we come down to 1,969 in 17 and then 1,726 in 18. And I summarized it on this sheet and I just wanted to go through each step and then give you the summary. I like to see the summary, but it's also good to go the other way. So then, the final step in general fund is we balanced it. So what we took was our revenues of 14, 636 for 17 and we added in our beginning fund balance to get us to the 17029 you see on the final budget. The expenditures were 15059. We added in the 1969 to get to the 17029, so it balances to zero. We did the same thing in 18 to get us to zero balance. And that essentially is cash that we've added in. So, have we ever used fund balance to balance the budget before? Yes. If you look at this slide, it shows in 16, 15 and 16, we used fund balance. In 14 and 13, we put money into fund balance. 2011 and 12, we used fund balance. In 2010 and 11, we didn't. And, I'm sorry, that should be nine at the bottom. Sorry about that. But what that demonstrates is during the budget process, fund balance was used to balance the budget. Now, at the actual, at the end of the year, in 14, we, and 15, we actually came out positive. Part of it was due to projects that didn't get accomplished. Part of it was due to looking, maybe more revenue came in. But the actuals don't always match the expected. The hope is that we do, but sometimes we don't. So. Any questions on that so far?
Yes, Counsel Humber.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at that fund balance from 2011, 2016 and the red numbers, which the amount that we're using is substantially greater than the black numbers for the fund balance. My question is, where is that curve intersecting? I mean, we're using more money out of the fund balance than we are over the long term. How do you reconcile that?
This slide. So if you look at this slide, it shows the wave action of fund balance. And if you look back to 2006 and compare it to 2018 projected, the trend line actually goes up overall. It dips and comes up. It dips and comes up. So, it isn't, it would be concerning if we got to 2018 or even actual in 2015 being significantly less than what we started, but we're not. So, it's actually in better condition than we started in 2006.
So then, the next question to follow that is, are those funds going into a variety of reserves? Or are they being absorbed in future budgets as we progress year to year?
So, we'll go, I have a slide group on the stability fund, but the-
Am I getting ahead of you?
A little.
I'm sorry. But I think I'll let you finish.
You're predicting my presentation.
It might, it might make you more comfortable to know that we had a lot of conversation about this.
Yes, we did.
Dr. Merriman and Patricia and myself. So, she, I think she will tell you some things.
I responded to your, do you have any questions? And I think I'd rather have you finish your presentation. Thank you.
I'll go for it. Okay. So, as I was saying here on the trend for beginning fund balance, the blue is the general fund, the pink is the stability fund, and the green is our marathon fund, which is really, it's kind of de minimis to talk about. But if you look at those two funds, the wave action to me says, we have used it kind of like people do for their own personal savings account. In lean times, you dip into it, but when it starts, things get a little better. You try to refill it and stay conservative throughout. But yet, you don't want to end lower at the end than where you started. And it appears to me, when you look at the graph, that demonstrates that pretty well. The general fund reserve, so I wanted to go through that in detail because that one was the, raised some questions also at the draft presentation. The stability account was set by ordinance number 1630 on July 3rd, 2012. The annual calculation requirement is that 25% of general fund revenues or $3 million, whichever is greater, must be kept in the stability account. The ability to use, we have to, there has to be a finding of an emergency or other exigent circumstance existing before you can use it. And it requires four affirmative votes by council. The calculation, or the current balance in the stability account is 3,398,100. That calculation was based on the 2015 revenues. Current expense reserve balance is actually higher at 3,765,288. That's because you put in the stability account at 3,398. You add in the Windjammer Park that was put in there anticipating excess sales tax in 2016, which is going to be transferred into the Windjammer Park in 17. And the fire fees that are in there at 81,800, we will be moving 61,200 to general fund for the fire feasibility study in 17 also. So, those are what makes up that OO2 fund balance. But their, the stability account is restricted by council. That will never be touched without council action, other than to make it grow. So we automatically are allowed to add to it if we go over the 3,398 at 25% of revenue, but we won't be able to take anything out without council approval. And that was the final of my, those are the questions that I noted. You may have more at this point, but those are the ones that I felt from the draft presentation really came up quite a bit. So.
Just one other additional comment. As a result of the conversations that we had towards the end of this process, I think we've decided to call a retreat early in 2017 to discuss a 10-year plan, something along that line, that Dr. Merriman and Patricia are, will be working on. And it'll, I think that that'll be a good time to talk about this stabilization account, whether we, whether we want to start, you know, using some of that as opposed to continuing to build that. So, but it'll be a larger plan than that and we intend to do it in the beginning of 2017. So. Right? Okay, so, before I open it up to council, I guess I'll ask the public if they've got any questions. This would be a good time to actually have a public, okay? Going once, twice? Okay, now back to council. Questions, comments, motions? Yes, Counsel Mans?
I have a question still.
Okay.
It's on the one-time cost out of the general fund, page 55.
Okay.
And you and I had gone through it. And I'm still kind of stuck on the fire one-time costs. I understand the feasibility. This is what we still owe for something that's already been done. But the bond consultant. And it's assigned $20,000 and I just don't see how. Can you explain more about that?
That is a budgeted amount. So if, because this involves, would involve a large project, this contract, if one were to be entered into, would be brought before council before it would be adopted. So, because it's that important, you still have, as council, the ability to deny or add to or decide what you feel is important for that.
Yes, Counsel.
So a follow-up question on that is, how long, when you do a bond development, do you figure out how to market it, what the bond thing's going to be? I remember the vital details we went through to have the very best bond rating when we went for the wastewater treatment plant. So that money, that debt is already out there. That's got to affect if we try to do one for the fire station, I would think. It won't be as good because at the time, you know, we were very meticulous on getting that bond rating, went down and testified and I would think that we wouldn't have the same rating that we had gotten for the wastewater for this possible project. Am I wrong or?
From what I understand, and Doug is the expert on this piece, so I probably, I'll defer after I make my statement. I believe this would be one that would be required to be voted on. Not a bond that we would use as a, the bond like we did for the wastewater treatment plant based on our rates. This is something that would, I believe, require public vote. Am I wrong?
You are correct.
Okay.
And so this?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this money would be used to kind of do that campaign and what they think it would be at the bond market or combination?
What this would be for is to go to a public vote for something like a fire station. There are a lot of state laws procedurally on how you do that. There are only, say, a certain number of times you can actually send an advertisement to your community. There are certain steps and things that you have to follow that if you trip on one of those, then it can delay your bond issue and things like that. So what this would be was having someone come in and helping us put together, assuming a council made a motion and decided to go forward to a public vote. This is having someone come in to help us market that and put that bond out to public vote. So, as far as your question, that's what the 20,000 is for. As far as your question as far as bond rating, there are two different types of bonds. One is your revenue bonds and that's with our utilities. And the other types are called general obligation bonds. And those are like if our general fund or our street fund, things that are not utilities, that's a different type of bond and they're rated separately. In that general obligation bond category- In that general obligation bond category, you have kinds that are called council manic, which means we just vote on it as a city council, and you can pass it, and they get a certain rating. One, we go to the vote of the public, and your public makes a decision that will do extra property taxes, and they secure those bonds with that property tax. Those are actually rated even higher. So when you get into a case of a voted bond levy for a fire station, it gets ranked on its own without looking at any other bond issue. And typically, those are higher rated bonds than we typically would do.
So the money. The chief would come back with a plan and say, if we hire this company, they can help us do the PR and whatever. But it's, the money is, and the plan is to be spent and possibly bring it to a vote in 2017, 2018, if I'm looking at the budget on one-time cost.
It's budgeted in 2017, so I would assume if it was going to come forward, that would be the year it would?
That would be the initial work to lay it out. You wouldn't probably see a bond issued till 2018 or 2019 on that. 2017 would be a little quick. And we also have to be cognizant too of what other bond issues are out there at the time. You don't want to tie them at the same time as, say, the school district or other entities that might be doing a bond issue. So there are a couple of different things we need to look at when we're doing that. But in the case of the budget and this $20,000, there's such a huge policy issue behind doing all of that. We would come back to city council and have a lot more discussion about that even before we did this $20,000 contract.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm just really worried that this is in the budget. 2017, I mean, it's just around the corner. With the wastewater treatment plant and the school district doing one on February 14, there's a certain absorption rate to our taxpayers. And I just don't see how this would float. And I think it would be $20,000 wasted. I can't see building a fire station and not being able to hire the personnel. As it was, we had to cut off hiring permanent personnel that the fire chief wanted to hire this year. And that's not even having another building, much less trying to equip it with separate equipment that's not even at the fire station. Yes, we are going to need it. I don't think it's been determined that where it would be or, it just, it really worries me, the burden when, yes, five, six minutes is our limit right now. And maybe mine would be the one house that would take seven, and maybe I'd wish it had been five. But I just, we can only do so much. And I don't think it's fair to jeopardize our kids in school. We've worked so hard to get them where they are and producing the students that are going to lead us and keep this town going. I can't see with the wastewater treatment plant, we had to flush. I'm sorry, you can't build anything, you've got to be able to flush. And I'm just worried that even though it's in the budget, maybe it just shouldn't be there. And wait till we do the next biennial budget and put it in there. I just think the timing, we're rushing it, we're pushing it, and I just don't think this is the right time. Just because it's in the budget, you're going to have someone say, well, it's in the budget, so we best will spend it. Well, maybe 2017 isn't the year for it. We're going to need it. I see the importance. And in the fire department, we couldn't do anything without them or the police. They're very important. I just think this is rushing, and I'm really worried. We worry about our public and what they can afford to spend and what they can't. And I just, I'm having a real problem unless someone else has something else to say to convince me otherwise, even though it's a one-time expense. That's still $20,000. That's not, that's not a quarter. You know, that $20,000 can be used for something else. We have a long laundry list of what we need in the city. And I just, I just finished paying off the feasibility study, but I just think it's too soon to do it in 2017. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Counselor Muns. Did, did I hear you say, Dr. Merriman, that it would take, it would take another vote of this group before we proceed on that?
Right. We would want to come back and talk to city council and make sure that this is the direction that council would want to go.
Okay.
The $20,000 is under that contract limit, but that doesn't mean, sometimes when there's a big policy issue at hand, we should have more discussion on that.
So I think we can assure you that it will come back for a vote.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
So Counselor Heisen.
All good questions. And all of those questions are exactly why you hire a consultant before you go out for a bond levy. That is the person who answers all those questions. The hiring of a consultant doesn't mean we're going to put something out to vote of the people next year. It just means someone is going to look into it and help strategize. And that's why we hire that person, so they can answer all of those very excellent questions and address all those concerns. And so we'll get to it when we get to it. But I just want to make sure I'm understanding the purpose of this purchase. Am I, is that right or am I on the wrong? I'm right, okay.
I love hearing that. Thank you. Dr. Merriman.
Okay. Other questions? Counselor Almberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, what is the projected completion date of your feasibility study? We've already authorized that for preliminary design and traffic study and the, also the rate study that goes with that? You had quite a package on your presentation at one of our workshops. So the big question is, when is the study going to be delivered to the council?
Part of it will be completed by the end of December, and then I anticipate the remainder by the end of February of '17.
Okay. So we'll get an opportunity to look at that long before we need to even get into a serious discussion about whether we're going for a general obligation bond. And that's how you're planning to fund it? Is that what you're telling us?
Yes, that is correct.
And do you have an anticipated time?
Should probably bring him up the microphone if you're going to.
Okay. Fair enough. Yeah.
I can usually move through the whole building without doing much trouble.
So what's the anticipated date that you'd, you would anticipate a, a public election for this bond?
We had considered the general election of '17.
November '17.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I need. We'll take a look at the study.
I walked all the way up. You've got some more questions. You got to.
You answered them down there.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks, Chief.
Counselor Waschinger.
Yes. I have a few, a few questions. First, just a real quick clarification. On page 10, there's a machinery and equipment of $50,000 in '17. And I can't figure out what, what that account number ties to or if that's a capital outlay project. I can't find.
Okay, which, could you read the bars number over to the left?
Yes. 001.45.594.11.6400 machinery and equipment.
That's where we-
General Government.
Put the carpet.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
It's an odd place for it, I know.
Okay. And then one more for now. I'm having a hard time reconciling transfers out and transfers in.
Okay.
I know there's a lot going on. And I know with the wastewater, I mean with the Windjammer Park, and there's a $250,000, I missed, for the parks that were moving in from REIT accounts and other multiple accounts to pay for. Where does that look like? Where does that reconcile in the general fund accounts?
It would reconcile, the transfers into the funds would go through the revenue stream. And the transfers out would go through the bottom of the expenditure stream. So there's a transfers out line item. I don't have the account numbers, but a good place to start when you're looking is look on page 56 through 57. And if you get, go to the very last page, anytime there is, like on page, let's go to page 56. On the finance line item, there's a transfer in of $17,200. If you go to the last page.
And there's a 1, yeah.
Yep. And you look at the 1, split costs with utility remodel with the four utilities. So you should be able to look in the four utilities and see a fourth of that $17,200 coming as a transfer out. And in, in general fund transfers in, it's just one total. So you're not going to see each individual one. But if you would like that level of detail, there's a report we can run out of Eden very, very easily if you would like to see it.
I feel, I will tell you, for me, I felt overwhelmed having 24 hours with, with the final.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I had a lot of, you know, I had more time with the draft, and I appreciated that. And I know we spent time going over it, and I marked it all over it. It was maybe because I'm so new as well. I felt overwhelmed having one day to sort of wrap my brain around where things are coming in and out.
As late as we were, this, as this being my first budget, it was getting it too close as far as I, the way I felt. And it was, we had a lot of changes at the last. There were a lot of added things. So my preference would be to give you guys a draft budget that really didn't change other than adding big beginning fund balance. And this really didn't. We just add, we changed some of the operating transfers in, but most of those were presented in the draft budget. But it wasn't presented with notes next to each transfer in. I mean, that level of detail normally you would need to ask for, and I'd be more than happy to provide.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Servadius.
Thank you. Just dovetailing off that, first and foremost, thank you. Ton of effort, I'm sure, especially being newer to the position here in Oak Harbor. So I appreciate all you've done in putting this together. So help me understand, and it's just really the same question that Councilmember Waschinger had. If I look at like page 14, there is a transfer out of the general fund reserves of three, I'm going to round up, $347,000 for 2017? And I struggled to reconcile where that would be going. Is it, you're saying maybe in the future, there could have been a footnote?
Well, normally, if you want that level of detail, it's normally in the notes section, which would increase the volume of this to overwhelming volume. If you specifically want to look at accounts, we put detail in there so it can describe that. But if we have a transfer out from general fund and if it's for projects, that's why I did these notes on the last page, so you could tell, like, the transfer from general fund to Windjammer Park, it shows that that's coming out of general fund and a multitude of other funds. But if there's a better way, if the council would prefer to have footnotes on any of the transfers in and out in the future, that wouldn't be hard for me to do. I could, I could present that.
What I'm wondering is, could those codes that you used on page 60, could you just drop that footnote in that same line item? And we could reference? It might just help.
With the draft budget, I'd be happy to. The final budget normally is just the actual accounts, but in the draft budget, I'd be happy to drop that in there.
Okay. That's all to move, but I do appreciate the work. Thank you.
Oh, no problem.
Yes, Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for a response to my email. I had a question about the general fund. And when the draft budget was presented, the operating revenues was at $14.6 million, and there was still deficit of $412,000. And I didn't see the application of the fund balance.
Right.
And when the fund balance was applied, the budget was balanced, and the general fund revenues now $17 million.
Yeah. And that was new to me too when I came here, my first experience with the first budget amendment. You have to budget both sides of it. I'm like, what do you mean? You just budget, you just budget the difference? No, we budget the full cash as revenue and the, the cash in the expense side, which is a great way because it's more transparent. But it is different than what I'm used to seeing too.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All this money makes me wish I had a bigger checkbook. I'm not going to ask you a question about, about the numbers and all that kind of stuff. I want to make a statement that says that when it comes time to vote for the budget, I'm going to vote yes. However, I want to be on record to say that I think we are making an absolute big mistake by closing the RV park. We're all talking lots of money, and we are dealing, I know the mayor is, almost daily economic development. And we're taking what little money the RV park gives us, and we're doing away with it. Now, when they started this process, we had a committee that met, and they made all these decisions, but no one talked to anybody in the RV park just to get ideas. I did that. I've been down there five times and talked to a lot of different people. The biggest thing is, we really like this RV park. And if you move it to another location, we ain't coming back. Now, they get that, and I can tell you, since I'm an RV-er and have made many trips around this United States, all around the United States, I have only seen one RV park in all of my travels that even comes close to what Oak Harbor has. And that happens to be in New Orleans. It's a KOA campground down along the water, and you're within walking distance of stores and shops and all that kind of stuff. Nowhere else do I see something like that. I know that we don't charge a lot, so it's not a lot of money coming in. But I can tell you this, on several conversations I had, the people that stay in that RV park down there are surprised that we only charge them 25 bucks a night. I had one lady tell me, why aren't you charging 50? It's worth it. Well, 50 probably would be okay, and we could get by with that, and that would help take care of the RV park. But that's not the most important money. The most important money is Safeway, Hagens, any place in town because you're within walking distance of it. People like that. They like this RV park because it is unusual. My point is, I think we should keep it open because of the tourists it brings in here. I don't believe we should fight against economic development by doing away with economic development, at least for that particular one. So again, I will vote yes for the budget, but on the record, I'm opposed to closing the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Anyone else? Counselor Almberg.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 1778 for the 2017, 2018 biennial budget.
Second.
So we've got a motion and a second by Counselor Almberg and Counselor Muns to adopt ordinance number 1778, 2017, 2018 biennial budget. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. We are off on to our last, number seven. We have two ordinances and resolutions, actually two resolutions, under item number seven. The first is 7A, Resolution 16-30, supporting Boys and Girls Club construction of new facility. We have our city administrator, Dr. Merriman.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The mayor's introduction just took my first line off the table. So this, Resolution 1630 is exactly what was stated. This is a resolution in support of the Boys and Girls Club. And they are seeking to do construction of a new facility somewhere within the city. On November 16, we held our last workshop where we had representatives of the club come and talk to us about a particular piece of property that the city owns right next to the senior center. It's between the senior center and where Big Brothers Big Sisters is right now. So there was a respectful request from the club that we would consider maybe doing a land lease with them. And in addition to that, possibly working with our legislative staff to see if we might be able to get some grant funding for the club through the state's capital grant program. So staff has been working on this. We had a couple of different things. We had to determine about the property itself because the senior center was purchased with grant money years and years ago. And typically, there are strings attached then to that property that we don't always have the ability to just use property in the way that we want. It still needs to meet that former grant requirement list. So we were able to clear the property from that. None of the property that was suggested at the workshop falls into that category. And even if it was, Steve Powers and his staff in Development Services actually contacted the Community Development Block Grant Program. And they let us know that in the future, if we want to do something, those strings no longer exist. They have expired. So that actually clears us up to be able to do things with that property without the concern that we'd be violating a past grant program. So the resolution that I prepared, I actually went to the club's website and pulled a lot of their information on what- of their information on what they do in the community. There's a couple of different things that we have to provide when we're talking about public property and the use thereof. In the wherethes, and you can see there are a lot of them on this resolution, we have to demonstrate that there is a public purpose. And this is where I went to their website, found the different programs they do, and they discuss in those wherethes what that public purpose is. The second part of this, as you can see, there are two sections at the bottom of the I actually handed mine off. Suddenly, it wasn't in my package anymore. The first section there, you can see what we are requesting, and City Council would express its support for the club in looking at different publicly owned property that we have. I actually made a call to Representative Dave Hayes and said, if we do a resolution, what do you need it to say if you're gonna go to Olympia for us and try to find some, some grant funding for this? And so number one, at the bottom of the resolution, came from that discussion as far as what we would have to do. And I think he has talked to the club about fundraising, about budgeting, and some of the management steps that they have to go through. So he said that would be good to put into the resolution. The second part of the resolution, we talk about getting legislative support, and that's from our legislative and senate delegation down in Olympia, that when the next round of capital budgeting requests come out, which will happen here in just a couple of months, that they give us some support in seeing if we can get some type of a capital grant application put through the process in the legislative session this next year. So that is what you see in this resolution. We've established what we see as a public purpose for this, and we've met the two requests that the club made to us during the workshop to see if they could get city support for the efforts that they're doing. So this is for your discussion and your decision what to do. The staff recommendation is if this meets your criteria, that you would adopt Resolution number 16-30.
Okay, before the council discusses it, I'd like to open it up to the public, see if we have anybody that would like to speak to this.
Hi, my name is Lynn Goble, and this is my husband Greg Goble, and Kathy and Duncan Chalfont, and Nikki. And we are very excited about this resolution. Since we've met with you through our workshop, we've been out in the community, and lots of people are very excited about this. We have filled out the package for Dave Hayes. Duncan has met with Ron Wallen. We even have a draft design. We have been busy in the last two weeks, and we will work very diligently to get this project for our community. And we thank you for your opportunity to give us this opportunity to make Oak Harbor an even better place for our Boys and Girls Club. And I think we have a family here that attends the Boys and Girls Club, and they are staying here because they are excited about this resolution.
You said it all. Thank you, Mrs., thank you, Lynn. Anyone else? Yes, yes, Nikki.
So I'm Nikki. I'm the unit director of the Boys and Girls Club, but I just want to thank you guys for bringing this up. Thank my building committee for working so hard. We have currently 490 club members, and we're growing every year, and an average daily attendance of 175 kids. So looking at a new facility on property that is close to the school districts is extremely important to us. So thank you, guys, very much for your time. Thank you for the hard work that everyone's put into it so far already.
Thank you, Nikki. Anyone else? Public. And thank you, Nikki, for what you do every day. Thank you. Okay, council. What would you like to, yes, Counselor Servadius?
I just want to say, I think this is a great example, not really public-private, but public, possible venture, so I will support it. And I want to say thank you. I know that if you take the Gobles and the Chalfonts sitting there, those four people, and I know you don't do the work you do or volunteer for any recognition, but I am in awe of the amount of hours that these people have given to this community, and there's a lot of great volunteers, but I think you're looking at four of the best right there that really believe in this community. So I appreciate you guys and wholeheartedly support this.
You're here. I agree. Yes, Counselor Heisen.
Enthusiastic ditto on all counts. And I, I love this. I love that there's an opportunity to explore this, even if that's all it is, is an opportunity to explore this. It's, it's very encouraging. I've, I've had the pleasure of spending some time at the Boys and Girls Club through my work with the Oak Harbor Youth Coalition, and, and I, I am also in awe. I don't know how you do what you do in, in the space that you do it. And anyone who's ever been in there when there are almost 200 kids, it's, the space is, is woefully inadequate. So I am so excited. I'm, I'm beside myself excited, and I really hope that this works out. And while I certainly can't speak for the rest of the council, if there's absolutely anything I can do to help you guys on your journey or advocate on your behalf, please let me know.
Yes, Counselor Almberg?
Thank you, Mayor. I've worked with this group on several projects. There's a lot of reasons why we have a really good school system, a new high school essentially in there. These people worked on this. If they, they think they can get it done, they will get it done. And I would like a little story here. We can all go back to Muhammad Ali's early days. Anybody know who Muhammad Ali is here? You know, he came, he always had these great pronouncements, you know, you know, one of them is, "I am the greatest." But one of them that he said that caught my attention a long time ago was, he said, "If I say a cow can lay an egg, don't doubt it, heat up the skillet." And, and I think these are the people who, they say they're gonna get this going. We shouldn't stand in the way as, as a government group. We should be supporting it and help motivate them along, give them all the support to allow them to make it happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Muns.
I'll make the motion if there's no other comment.
Anyone else? Okay.
I move we adopt Resolution 16-30.
Second.
Wow, we've got a motion in about, in about six seconds. But I'll, I'll give the second to Counselor Wassinger. So we've got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 16-30. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. That's wonderful. Congratulations and good luck. Last item for the evening is item number 7B, Resolution 1628. I'll let you take it from here, Dr. Merriman.
Okay, thank you. Item 7B is the resolution for our 2017 Washington State Legislative Priority Issues. This is the list of items that was compiled based on city council input, department head input, from different organizations that we work with, whether that be AWC or the different organizations that support our departments. So we have put this together in a ranking order here, so you can see what items we want to propose to our legislative delegation this year. There is a packet, and I'm looking around for the yellow and blue folders, and I see a lot of them up here. Give a lot of credit to Nicole Tesh for working on the graphics for this and putting this together. What we want to do, as we know in past years, we've gone down and met with our group, usually in a meeting down there in the Capitol Building, and we've given them a list of, say, 15 to 20 different things that we want to do. And there's been times that we've talked with them, and you can tell, that's a lot of different things. So what we've wanted to do is really to start focusing on three, four, maybe five of the highest priority items. And I think they appreciate that a lot more when they know what our real interests are, and then they can really focus their time and energies on those items to really make sure we get something from the legislature on that. So you'll find on the main sheet in there, on the front page, I believe there are five of the legislative priorities listed on there. And if you look on the flip side, or maybe a second page right next to it, there'll be a list or so of another dozen. Now, that list of a dozen items, those are ones that we would like them to, to have their radars on and be hearing those things. If they see any of those topics come up during the legislative session, then they know where we stand and know what support they can give us. So our requested action for tonight is have any discussion that you need to on this legislative priority list, and if everything looks good to go, then I would say, staff's recommendation would be look for you to adopt Resolution 1628.
Okay, before we discuss that up here, I'd like to open it to the public, see if there's any input from the public. Going once, twice, okay. Bring it back to council. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up.
Just, my name's Hal Hovey. Just a clarification, I'm looking at the packet that's online, and it has 16 items, but it doesn't have a breakout. Are these in order? The first five are the first, on the one page, and the rest are the second page?
Yeah, let's, go ahead. This is where we, we have another piece of information I could give Mr. Hovey mine after this meeting here. But the, the list for resolution is in resolution format, so your attachment aid has all the different items on there, but it doesn't have the breakdown that I was discussing. That breakdown on the top five versus that is in your packets that we handed out, that's not attached to the resolution itself. Is that making sense?
So there is, there is no priority is the answer, as they're listed here?
Correct.
Counselor Campbell?
Aye, he answered.
Okay. Okay. Any other input from the public? Counsel? Mayor Broten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I fully support this resolution and the legislative priority issues that will be taken to Olympia next year. I think it makes a big difference when we go there in person and talk to our representatives, Mr. Hayes, Ms. Smith, and State Senator Barbara Billy, and always does when we talk to them in person. Fully support the Boys and Girls Club. I even volunteered for the Boys and Girls Club in Coopville. Now I'm gonna volunteer in Oak Harbor. When my daughter, Eileen Stone, was the director in the Boys and Girls Club of Coopville, my wife and I volunteered there. Thank you, that's all.
Okay. Legislative priorities. Anybody? Yes, Counselor Muns?
May I make the motion?
Counselor Almberg?
It's more conversation.
Okay. Counselor Almberg?
Okay. Excuse me. I have a question on item number one, low-impact development. This relates to our discussion that we had with the fire department and the prospect of having, and the need for having a future fire station. When we were presented with the direction of growth in this community and the rate of growth, which is projected to go westward, we did not have this information about the most current amendment to our NPDES permit, which is, now requires this low-impact development. The impact from the, the, the low-impact development portion of, or the amendment of the NPDES permit is going to increase the cost of a standard residential plat lot by at least $35,000. And what does that, and I'm not looking at a, I don't have a crystal ball, but I am able to calculate what those impacts are in a development, in a standard development. When you go with all of the onsite, it, the, you have to recharge all of your onsite hard-surface water into the ground. You have, you will have permeable, permeable asphalt sidewalks, hard, all the hard-surface water goes into the ground. And you still have to put in a tight-line catch basin, stormwater collection basin system. So what I'm saying is, this LID element of the NPDES permit is going to impact our growth in our UGA and in our city limits. And I'm going to ask you, Chief, if you'd be sure to convey that information to the engineers, the analysts who are studying this, so that they know what the impacts are going to be from this. Because this is fairly new stuff compared to when we first started talking about this. It's going to not only impact the growth, the rate of growth, but also the traffic and traffic patterns, based on our density in certain parts of the city. That's what I wanted to say about this particular amendment. And I, and I think that every time we have a chance to talk to our representatives, that we have to lean on this particular issue, among others. But this has the most important thing in my mind, because this is going to stifle affordable housing. And if we don't have affordable housing, there's gonna be more demand for low-income subsidized housing, and more demand you have in that area, the higher probability that you're gonna have more homeless. And so, you know, this, this stuff flows downhill, and it's not gonna take long for the, for the analysts, the engineers to figure that out when they look into this in depth. Thank you.
Make a motion.
Counselor Heisen?
Just a quick thank you to staff, Nikki, Dr. Merriman, whoever assembled this. I appreciate the, the language change. You know, instead of just support or refrain, you know, it says promote and advocate and assist. And, you know, it's, it's not as, as passive as, you know, would you please not say no to this if it comes up? Because I, I want these people to actually be promoting and advocating and assisting. And, and that's very, that's very clear in this, and I appreciated it. I love the way it reads. Thanks.
Okay, other comments, questions? Motion? Yes, Counselor Muns?
I move we adopt Resolution number 16-28.
Second.
We've got a motion by Counselor Muns and a second by Counselor Servadius to adopt Resolution number 1628, City of Oak Harbor, 2017 Washington State Legislative Priority Issues. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, thank you very much. That passes unanimously, and I believe that we are at the end of our agenda. So I thank you to your, for your involvement this evening, and with that, I think we're adjourned.
Good, Mayor.